And with that, we will go directly to the first item on the agenda.
The first item, hello. Act 235 of 2015 requires that the city assemble and organize the governing body in the month of December, or the month of January for 2025. Most of what is required is the setting of meetings and such for 2025. We've already done that by ordinance. And that provided that in your packet. Provisions of the municipal code establishing procedures for setting the agendas and conducting the meetings of the governing body have also been provided to you. Those sections from our municipal code. And those are the types of things that the Act 235 is intended to have us revisit each January. So the discussion is yours.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Director Neil Martin, you're recognized.
The question that I had on page five regarding executive session, and it gives, it outlines when you can have an executive session or how you can have an executive session, what it's for. But it says that executive session will be permitted for only the purpose of discussing or considering employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, displanting, or resignation of any public officer or employee. But I think the way I understand it, there are other methods in which we can hold an executive session. Does anybody know what those are? Can someone share those with us?
Jerry, would you like to comment on that?
In addition to the employment provisions, which have been historically a part for you, the only other exemption permitting executive session of which I'm aware is the discussion of water system security matters. And because of 9/11 and other issues, the legislature has authorized special treatment of water system security issues. And one of those special provisions is the ability to hold an executive session regarding those.
Okay. So employment decisions and water system security. When we make a request for executive session, let's say we want to do a performance evaluation, or maybe we just wanted to talk about a public official. Does it always have to be named a performance evaluation? Because it seems like that's what we've always done. Does it always, we want to meet an executive session to have a performance evaluation of so and so.
The Act requires that the board state the purpose for the executive session before you go into session.
Okay. So it could be, it could be any one of those terms.
Correct.
Listed in Act 235. Or listed in this document here. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Director Camp, you're recognized.
Yes. Just a few questions here. I'm just trying to feel like all the ones that may be the most pertinent. In section 2-27, the term expeditious is used to describe the manner of contacting the news media for emergency meetings. How can we define or clarify what constitutes expeditious to ensure consistency and avoid any potential ambiguity?
Remind me again what section you were at.
Section 2-27.
Subsection.
It talks about expeditious. And then my other thought is if we were in an emergency, and I understand this might be state statutory stuff, I am the rookie, but, you know, two hours to wait just seems like a long time to be waiting.
Well, if I might, I mean, in that section, the subsection four, the next sentence makes an attempt at defining expeditious because it says expeditious manner shall be deemed satisfied if attempted contact is by email, telephone, and facsimile. You know, the only other thing we would do in practicality is do something through our GovDelivery public notification system that we've started using in the last year or so. And so that would be also a public notification. But the other thing that it does is that it allows for a number of the Board of Directors to make such a decision and for the, well, it provides for reconsideration later if somebody disagrees with it, but at that time presumably the emergency is passed. But I agree. I mean, the ability to act swiftly when emergency action is needed by the board. I think the statutes do provide for as quick action as possible in order for the governing body to meet and make a decision. But and a lot of times, staff will take latitude depending on what the emergency is. I mean, I think it's unforeseen necessarily that there's an emergency happens that we need a board action on, that we can't act to protect public health and safety.
Yeah, fair enough. And then my only comments would just be that it was good for me to see the section 235B about discussing decorum, the rules of order, and if I understand, then the directors can ask for a point of order. And my only thought was, is there outlines always, is there any further discussion on the board and maybe not, to ensure that that process is consistently applied?
I think at that point, I mean, that's one of the reasons we review these every year and so that the board can, we provide these particular sections so the board can reread them and understand what their duties and obligations and what the prerogative might be during the course of a meeting.
And that's where I would lean to, like, you directors that have served on this board a long time, are there improvements that you would desire that, you know, through your years of history and experience in this?
I think over the years, this thing has changed and evolved and improved, so that's good where it is right now in my mind.
Okay.
But I'm open for another improvement at any time.
As I said, though, I think it is good that the board sees this and recognizes that there are things that each board member can do if they see something that they don't agree with.
And we would expect board members to do that and assist in the process to make sure we have good, meaningful discussions. Any other questions on this particular item?
One final, Mayor.
Yes, you recognize.
On page 11, I think this is, it's item D, or item H, I'm sorry. The membership of standing committees shall terminate on December 31 of each year. I don't recall that, but that would mean every committee that we have, membership would terminate. Is that a true statement?
Well, I would say that the standing, we don't really have any standing committees.
So what are our other committees then? What are all our boards and commissions? Or are they just, is that what they are, they're boards and commissions?
They are, they are boards and commissions that are appointed for specific terms. We don't have, I mean, I think that would be, if the board would make a motion during the course of a meeting to create a standing committee for a particular subject.
Okay.
And appoint members at that time, an ad hoc kind of thing.
That makes sense.
Contrary, but I don't think we have any, what we would consider standing committees.
Any other comments on item one? Okay. Do we need to take any action, Mr. Administrator?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to item two.
Item two is a discussion regarding the former Acme Brick Company property. Coming to the podium to introduce this item is Sarah Dooster, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Dingman. As you'll recall, the Board of Directors approved the purchase of approximately 111 acres of property that was formerly utilized by the Acme Brick Company in October of 2023. And through the discussions of that, the leading priority, of course, is stormwater flood mitigation of that. And through the discussions, the board, citizens in the entire community had, it was using this for both stormwater mitigation, but then also the development of park amenities. And if you'll recall, our department, I wasn't present for it, but did present a agreement with RDG Planning and Design in October of last year. And that agreement was not approved because the board expressed concerns that that portion of the agreement, that planning process would substantially delay the progress of the flood mitigation. So in kind of looking at that, the purpose of the study session is to provide the board with additional details of why those two studies and plans really need to work in conjunction with one another. And to best provide you with information, we've invited Scott Crawford with RDG Planning and Design, Inc., and also Travis Brezendine with Half Associates, who the Engineering and Streets Department have selected to do the flood mitigation study. So with that, I'll invite them up.
Gentlemen, as you start, please introduce yourselves.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you to members of the board for allowing us to share some additional information tonight. My name is Scott Crawford. As Sarah mentioned, I'm with RDG Planning and Design. We are the lead team that was interviewed and selected middle of last year to collaborate with the city to develop the park master plan for the former Acme property. And here also with me tonight is Travis. As she mentioned, they will be completing in parallel with the park master plan, the stormwater mitigation ponds that will actually be built on the property. And so what we had prepared for you tonight was a brief presentation to give you kind of an overview of how these two processes will work in parallel with each other and provide reciprocal benefits to each study and master plan as they're being completed and ultimately building the stormwater mitigation ponds on the property. With that, we'd first like to give kind of an overview of kind of the high level of each particular effort, the park planning, as well as the stormwater mitigation ponds. And then we did work through with city staff and identified two precedent park case studies that have really well-integrated stormwater management features, stormwater detention features, and also provide parallel economic benefits to the immediate and regional areas in which they're located. And then we want to build plenty of time for questions and answers. As I mentioned, I'm Scott Crawford with RDG. We have a broader team for the park master planning effort that also includes McClellan Consulting Engineers and Chris Morris and Andy Hannah are here tonight as well. And we also, Prose Consulting is a nationwide operations, maintenance, and overall program planning, Parks and Recreation professional that we work with across the country that is a part of our team as well. This is kind of the core team that will be working on the park master plan that include professionals related to planning, landscape architecture, conservation, community engagement, and outreach. And then, of course, Chris and Andy here locally with McClellan Consulting Engineers will be a part of our team as well. Then we have a broader team that will provide additional expertise related to lighting design, your experience with design, and some of the more detailed components that could be contemplated to be placed on the park property. So with that, we wanted to share with you a bit about the overall intent of the park master planning process is really to help work very, very closely with Travis's and his team with Half and with the city engineering and streets to really accelerate the pace in which the detention and stormwater management features can be designed, engineered, and ultimately built, to then also provide long-term benefit to the city once some of the park improvements are funded and start to come online so that we can integrate the two of those very, very well to benefit each other, maximize the amount of stormwater management volume control that we can provide on the property, as well as maximize the long-term recreational, both active and passive uses on the property for the park ultimately that will be built. And that process is built really into seven major tasks, really six planning tasks, and then ultimately a final deliverable that will come back to your body for a review and approval. And Travis, did you maybe want to say a few words on the stormwater management ponds before we talk about schedule?
Travis Brezendine with Half Associates, appreciate your time this evening. The slide before you here represents the footprint of the two ponds based on the preliminary study we completed for the city in October of 23. Those ponds are based off some rough information we had to kind of start looking at the value and make sure the value-to-benefit ratio was there. As an example, or to give you a little comparison, that pond on the east side of the road is roughly 11 acres. That's the footprint we feel that pond needs to be. The one on the west is around eight acres. And just as a comparison, Carroll and Cross Park is eight acres roughly. So that'll give you an idea of the size of ponds we're talking. The benefit for us working with RDG's team is that we can, yeah, we can go and design dry ponds right now, but if we work with them, it can become an amenity, as Carroll and Cross Park is, that can be used as a wet pond potentially, offering an amenity to the park that I think needs to be implemented in with that design. So in other words, those footprints, we still have our eight acres, 11 acres, whatever it is, but those become a different shape potentially depending on what their team is looking for in boardwalks or whatever it might be. And he can provide more, and Scott can provide more information about that. So that's a little background on what you're looking at there.
Thank you, Travis. And so to really press home the coordination and collaboration between these two efforts, what's on the screen before you today is working with Sarah and Jeff and the rest of the selection committee for the park master plan. We had defined about a 14-month-long process from start to finish to engage the community, work through a rather robust public and community engagement process that includes four actual physical open houses, as well as we intend to use social pinpoint to engage the public in between those open houses and for community members that may not be able to attend those open houses that have plenty of opportunity to provide feedback and comments into the process. And parallel with that, we'll also be working through several phases of concept development. We have a market analysis and benchmarking phase of work that we'll go through with the steering committee that's appointed to work with this group, ultimately arriving at a concept plan and an operation model that will provide the city with a very comprehensive understanding of not just what the community wants, how that will look and integrated into the park, and very well integrated in with the stormwater mitigation ponds, but also what the initial and the long-term operational obligations will be for the community moving forward, as well as revenue generation opportunities that the park might present. And similar to that, the schedule that Travis and his team put together for the stormwater mitigation ponds works right in parallel with that park master planning process. And this is the two of those schedules overlaid with the park planning on the upper portion and the stormwater ponds on the lower portion. And the darker dashed red lines really identify the key points of coordination and collaboration between the two efforts to ensure that the location, the configuration, the depth, the shoreline treatments, the volumes that we're detaining, all are working well to maximize both the flood mitigation and the flood control of the basins on the property, but also the long-term benefits to the park development as it starts to phase into development after the ponds are built. And so that very far right of the four key coordination points throughout that process, the very far right dotted line illustrates when Travis and his team anticipate having the stormwater detention basins prepared to go out to bid, which is in early 2026. And so those would then be bid, presumably receive bids that are approved and funded, and move right into construction right at the end of kind of the deliverables of when the master plan is completed. And so the two timelines work very, very well with each other. And so right out of the gate, the first coordination and collaboration item would be actually getting a survey of the site. Obviously, when the city acquired the site, there was a comprehensive boundary survey that was completed to trace down the property lines of the sale of the property. The next step will be to get a full topographic survey and start some of the environmental investigations and other subsurface geotechnical work that'll need to take place for both efforts, both for the stormwater mitigation ponds as well as for the park master planning to understand what the subsurface conditions are. So with that, we just wanted to share two quick precedent park studies. There's actually six that we could walk through. Working with Sarah and her team, we kind of identified two that we would just give a brief overview of tonight. One of them is the Prairie Trail Parks and Trails Plan, and the second one is the Iowa River Landing Wetland Park. Both of these projects are projects where we completed both the stormwater management and flood mitigation design in parallel with the parks and amenities and overall planning design. So Prairie Trail is a 1,000-acre planned neighborhood community in the middle of a suburban community, about 120,000 in population. And it was, it's right in the core of that, where that community grew around because it was the historical Iowa State University Agricultural Research Center, as well as the munitions plant during World War II. And when the facilities were decommissioned and the research farm vacated the property, it was acquired by the city and one primary developer. And through that, we were able to plan out the entire community and specifically narrow in on the stormwater management guidelines for the property in conjunction with the Parks and Trails Plan. And what that led to was the ability to develop the entire development around the movement of water and the appropriate stormwater management of the water to allow the entire, what was agricultural development or agricultural use to be developed into neighborhoods and benefit both the flood control as well as the recreational amenities. And there were eight total parks that were built that part of this. I just wanted to focus on three, three that provided the majority of the stormwater management for this particular development. First one is Vintage Park, where we were able to design in a wet detention basin that has water in it at all times, and it has enough freeboard and bounce that it's able to control and manage the 100-year flood events. And it has different tiered weirs at the outflow structure that allow that water to leave the ponds and move further downstream based on the size of the storm event. The second one is Promenade Park, which is just on the opposite side of the intersection, very similar to the scenario that you all have with the former Acme property, the major arterial corridor by kind of bisecting the two sides of the property. And that particular park actually was developed with the intent that the water body, the lake on the property, would not only provide flood control, but would also be an amenity that would drive adjacent commercial and retail and hospitality development along one side of the lake. And it was conceived to do that and has been quite successful. There's a whole area in Prairie Trail that's kind of on the far edge of that lake that's developed, that's been rebranded as the district at Prairie Trail, and it's a series of mixed-use development directly adjacent to the lake and very active within the community. The third park is T'Chakaqua Park, and of the three, this was one that was much more passive recreation use, but still provided a critical connection throughout the entire development. And some of the early concepts of that were very formal, some were informal, but ultimately it was built to provide flood mitigation control and passive use recreation to manage, again, that 100-year storm event. And it's directly adjacent to some of the single-family neighborhoods that are built in that community now. The second case study that we wanted to share that just gives a kind of a different approach to this is actually managing floodwaters along the Iowa River. And this was part of a FEMA flood buyout program to actually acquire private property along the Iowa River that was within the floodplain. Over about 20 years, the community was able to purchase out a lot of the properties along the Iowa River that would consistently flood. And we helped develop the development plan for that entire district that's shown in the colored rendering there. But specific to the park project, on the far right of your screen, the Wetland Park was an area that we had identified very early on to help manage some of the floodwaters along the Iowa River on this site to reduce flooding downriver on some of the residential homes that were not a part of the FEMA flood buyout program. And so there were a variety of recreational elements that were explored to happen both on the river, over the river, and in this case even in the river during that master planning process. And ultimately, what was developed was a large wetland that actually provided a number of things. It provided flood control along the Iowa River. We reconstructed wetlands that the city was able to use as part of a much larger wetland bank across their community for other developments. And it was the impetus for, at the time, a regional hotel conference center that started out as a Hilton and about three years ago was converted to a Hyatt Regency Conference Center. And it's been a really successful project for the community. There are elevated boardwalks that move around and adjacent to the development. That's the hotel in the background there, adjacent to the park. They developed an outdoor pavilion that hosts a variety of different events, weddings, receptions, and things right along the park. And there are outlook towers, elevated bird viewing platforms within the park. And the whole park is designed to flood. This is during one of the flood events where you can see all the elevated boardwalks are underwater because it was during the time in which they had perceived a large amount of rain. It's hydraulically connected directly to the Iowa River and is allowed to surcharge some of that water off of the river through the sand seam that connects this to the adjacent river that flows to reduce flooding downstream. So those were just two examples of many that we could share that we just wanted to highlight that provide kind of the context around the close integration of the stormwater management and the flood mitigation measures that will be designed and engineered for the property and how they can be very closely tied into the long-term plan to convert it into a public park as well. I think Travis and I'd be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Director Rigo, you're recognized.
Thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for your time and for being here tonight. So is it fair to say that in your, you know, professional opinion and with the expertise you've demonstrated in the projects you've worked on across the country, that it's best practice for park uses and commercial uses to tie into water management and flow sort of simultaneously as you design and build these things out? Is that a fair statement? And is it also accurate to say that you hamper one or the other in the long term if you do not work these things well together?
Yeah, I believe everything you stated is correct. A lot oftentimes parks, parks are developed oftentimes in the floodplain, sometimes even in the floodway, for that very reason that they are, oftentimes the facilities in there are either flood-hardened or resilient enough that they're designed to flood. In this case, we have the opportunity to integrate in a flood control measure that will hopefully reduce the frequency and severity of flooding downstream and do that in a way that actually creates recreational amenities around those mitigation measures. But oftentimes, some of the most, and many park users just enjoy the experience, but being at the edge around above water adds to that experience that you have when you're in a park. We have an opportunity here to create wet basins that provide that experience, but also provide the maximum flood control for the community on this property.
Sure. Well, you know, it just, thank you very much. You know, it seems to me we voted unanimously to approve the purchase on this property back in October of 2023, based on what we were presented with tonight and materials we've had. You know, it looks like a 14- to 17-month timeline, you know, to work through on this. And, you know, doing it right takes time. And I mean, I personally would suggest that we get started. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Saddle?
Thank you. So the gentleman has the presentation. Could you go back to the slide that has the road and the two detention ponds, by chance? Can you go back at all?
You go ahead.
Right there. Perfect. Perfect. Yeah. So thank you very much for coming. I guess the question to the engineers and the board is, when this was proposed to us a year and a half ago, like May of 2023, my understanding was the, I'll call it the left side of the park where the Acme Brick Quarry is, was going to be bike park. Mountain Bike Park was sold to us. And the right side was going to be the flood mitigation area, 50 million gallons, I think that's the number, I remember that. You know, my, we were sold, I was sold this is that we're going to take the old quarry center and turn it into a state-of-the-art bike park, mountain bike park. Some are the way they have in Rogers. You go up in Rogers or Bentonville area, right on the interstate, they have one there. It was going to be better than that. But now I'm hearing we're talking about two detention ponds and now trails. I thought the original intent for this project was a world-class mountain bike park. And then we're going to use the east side of where the offices was, because I talked about, you know, do you remove the road? And do you cut the road to the backside of the park and change, remember that? And I had people who thought it was crazy, but, you know, I look at this going, you're separating two detention ponds with a road. Do you get rid of the road? Do you do things different? I struggle with this because I'm not here in mountain bike park. You know, to me, the flood mitigation is the biggest thing because it's going to help with the town branch, May branch, downtown. It all starts from up there and flows towards the Arkansas River. But I'm not hearing we're going to build a mountain bike park, we're going to do a bunch of stuff. of stuff. So I struggle with this because that's how we were sold this is, because I remember Friends of Ford were here, the trails team was here, and they wanted a mountain bike park. And we were going to use the quarry and up on top of the hills by the water tank. All that was going to be open for mountain bike and it was going to be the world-class park. So now I'm hearing something different, which now we're talking, and then we should look at the parks thing that they had, that was maybe looking at commercial on the road. So I struggle with putting two detention ponds on a major thoroughfare right next to the road, because now you're making Old Greenwood Road a bridge to connect them together. I'm assuming that's what we're going to do, put a pipe underneath there and connect them. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I can chime in a little here regarding that. The reason they're set up as two separate ponds is so we don't have that hydraulic connectivity between the two. They're two separate drainage basins. So one option would be to, yes, a very expensive option, but would be to connect the flow, if you will, to direct everything to the east and do one large pond on the east, but it would not be an easy task.
Is the pond where that new brick quarry is, is that proposed pond in the quarry or is that outside the current quarry section?
That was set up very preliminary based on City Topo. It's in the quarry, but like I said, it's, this can all be moved as we're getting into final design or preliminary design and final design. We'll work towards.
I just remember Director Morton Lavon really adamant about that we'd go by the whole side, by all the right-hand side and let that be the flood mitigation, and then the left-hand side would be your mountain biking park system. So, thanks, Mayor.
Let me call on Administrator and then Director Neil Martin.
What I might add, hopefully, is that, you know, of course, these two that are shown on this particular slide, the two basins are rough estimates, mostly to show the footprint of the size that's needed. My impression, I mean, yes, there was a lot of discussion on what else, what other types of amenities might go on this property. The mountain bike component that Director Settle mentioned was a big one, as well as hike or bike amenities all across that property. One of the important elements that has worked into this process, this master planning process, is that public input component. I mean, there were several advocates for the purchase of the property based on, like Director Settle said, certain things that were said and ideas for the property. But once we get down to it, when we start planning this out, the public input component becomes very important, because then, you know, it may be that the public wants, you know, the public that we heard at the time we purchased the property wants strictly a mountain bike facility. It may be, but that the public that comes out to the public input meetings and contributes to the development and the master planning of this process wants something else or some mixture of something else. And so I think that the public input component will be very important to how this project plays out. And that's specifically what RDG was brought in to do. And we specifically asked them to show these types of projects that they've worked on that incorporate the stormwater management component.
But can't we do the public hearings before we hire a firm? I mean, at the end of the day, can't we do, can't Sarah and the team do the public hearings and get public input and then feed that to whoever are going to be the designer and let them take that? I mean, do we need a design firm to be the public hearings? I mean, we got people that can do this. Why not let city staff have four public meetings over the next four weeks or four months? And if we don't get the support, then we can always punt and go back, but you have somebody to have a public meeting, why don't you have our staff do it?
You're going to have to have the potter.
Microphone. Microphone.
I was just saying that we have to have that topography study first. I mean, we can put forth a whole lot, and I don't want to jump in line, but we could put forth a whole lot of ideas, but if the topography of the area doesn't align itself with what the community is saying, I mean, we wasted time and for the community and us. So we need to know what we can do with some of this area first.
Director Neil Martin?
So, Mr. Crawford, for those two parks that you showed, what was the timeline to get it from design to completion? And my guess is they are completed. Is that correct? So what was that timeline? I mean, to me, we talked about, what, a 14-month timeline just to plan it? How long was it until it was actually built out?
Those two projects were built, the park components of them, were planned in about, the master plan of them took about 12 to 14 months each. And the Prairie Trail one that had multiple parks, that one was built over many, many years. In fact, portions of that development that started construction, really just prior to the 08 recession, are still under construction now. Some of the neighborhoods are still being built. The Iowa River Landing Wetland Park, that particular project was designed in about 12 or 14 months and permitted. That one went through a much larger permitting process through the Army Corps since it sits along the Iowa River. And the construction of that one lasted about 16 months. There were funding gaps in there, obviously, when they're built. For a park project of this size in a community of your size, it's very common for these parks to be master-planned through a process similar to what we're proposing here in conjunction with any kind of stormwater detention basins, flood control measures, over a similar timeline of what we've proposed here. And oftentimes, the ponds or the flood mitigation pieces are the first phase to be constructed. And then the park can be built over many phases. Oftentimes, we refer to parks of this size and magnitude as generational parks because they oftentimes take a generation to build and get funded or are built over 10 or 15 phases of implementation.
How did these two parks that you referenced, how did they get funded? Were they, was it sales tax? Did they bond? Kind of how did they?
Excellent question. Both projects had a mix of funding through public CIP funding. Some of them had, some of them were part of TIF districts that received TIF funding. And there were even some private investments that were put into some of the Parks and Trails systems in the Prairie Trail example that I had shared through DRA, which was the master developer of the whole area.
Okay. And do you recall what the total costs were for those, just for example purposes?
Prairie Trail would be a tough one just because that one has so many separate parks within it. At the time, when the Iowa River Landing Wetland Park was built, it was around $7.5 million.
7.5 million total?
Correct.
Total design, actual build. Did you guys build it as well?
Did we construct it?
Yeah.
No, we are an AD firm. We are not a contractor.
Okay. So we hired the construction firm for that. If I remember correctly, when RDG first came to the board, we didn't move forward. I don't know if we voted to table it or if we voted to, we voted it down. Does anyone recall what we did?
I believe it was voted down.
It was voted down. And I think the cost was $700,000. Is that right, for the design?
Yes, I think that's correct.
$700,000. And if I remember correctly, some of that money was coming from streets, the 1% streets, bridges, and drainage, sales tax. And then the rest was coming from the general fund. And to me, I think the cost was one thing, but then the funding from the general fund, I think, is something that I had concerns about. If we were to move forward with this, I think it would have to come out of parks. And I think parks, who we create, we have a 1-8 cent sales tax for parks, would need to fund that. And just like we talked about, or we were talking about with the slides, I could have gotten there with the slides if that money would have come out of the park sales tax. And at one point, it was coming out of parks. But, you know, we took the entire $4.2 million for slides out of the general fund. This is another portion of that coming out of the general fund. I think it ought to come out of parks.
If I can speak on that, our 1-8 cent sales tax, whenever we did the renewal, it is for capital projects only.
No planning.
So our 1-8 cent sales tax could not go towards this because there is no planned construction. And also with that included in our parks budget is our allocation. It's about $427,000. It already is included in the 2025 adopted budget by the board.
Wait, repeat that last part.
The budget that the board adopted, the 2025 budget, the general fund's allocation of that, it's about $427,000, is already included in the approved budget.
From the general fund?
Yes.
For the Parks Department.
Yes. Under our Parks Department Program 6201.
Okay.
So it's not 6208 capital money that comes from the sales tax, but it is already budgeted in the Parks Operating Fund.
Okay, out of the general fund.
Yes, sir.
Director Kemp?
Yeah, Sarah, you might want to stay here. I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask, just making sure I'm catching on with some of the things that Director Martin was talking about, because I see funding gaps here. And my concern is, you know, we could fund this big development and then if it took a generational project to complete, then we've taken dollars from today's dollars on items that we're going to have to consider, like purchasing of the city hall is on the ticket, you know, which, you know, I agree, I think we should look at not financing that and saving the 2.8 million. But there's only just so much money to go around. And that's my concern was, what budget, if I hear you correct, the allocation to the Parks Department does not contribute to any of this consulting cost that we would incur. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Here, I'll tell you the exact amount. So the agreement with RDG for the park master planning is 698,000. So the same allocation that was used to purchase the Acme Brick property, it was about 61% general fund. So for the RDG's master plan, that equates to $427,455. That money is already in our parks budget out of Program 6201, which is Parks Maintenance. So the remaining of that agreement with RDG, a little over 270,000, that is coming from the street maintenance fund, which is under the Engineering Department.
So are you saying that all of this consulting is already included in the 2025 budget?
Yes, sir.
And then if the board or whoever is going to make a decision, if we were just to consult only to do the pond, you know, I understand that we're asking to do this together, but is, do we know the cost of just that?
I would have to defer to Stan. That particular agreement is under his purview.
The question was the portion to do the engineering for the ponds?
I know that both, I know what I'm hearing tonight is that these consulting fees are included in the 2025 budget based on what's allocated to the Parks Department for this and then what's allocated to your department for this. But if the board just wanted to do the ponds for now, do we know how much that cost is for concept development?
For the actual engineering for it's 466,000. We have on the preliminary agenda for next week to bring that to the board to do the engineering for the actual design of the ponds.
Okay. And then, so the 400, how much is it again?
466.
466. And then the park portion is how much then?
I believe 66.
I thought it was 200,000 something.
698 total.
698 total, okay. All right. So the parks, like another, call it 300,000 or something, to go alongside the engineering of the pond?
Through the street sales tax programs, the street drainage sales tax program funding it. Because we actually had in our CIP that was approved last year, we had $270,545, which is that 39% that Sarah spoke of that was going to be coming through the street drainage sales tax program.
So there's no general fund demand to take care of these consulting costs?
There is, but that's been built into the parks budget for 2025.
Ultimately, what happened is they allocated dollars from the general fund, just like general fund funds salaries out of the Parks Department. There's a 300-some-odd thousand allocated, or whatever the number is, allocated from general fund to parks. It'll get paid by parks, but it's ultimately from general fund.
Another question I had is how much flooding would those retention ponds actually remedy? What's our targeted expectation outcome for that?
Okay, as Travis mentioned earlier, kind of culminating with the purchase of this property, back in October of '23, we completed a preliminary detention houses, which is essentially what those basins are based on. And this is executive summary from it that I have in front of me. And let me just read a couple of things to you. The addition of the Acme ponds alone removed 39 houses from the 25-year floodplain and 11 houses from the 100-year floodplain. The ponds also allowed the system to efficiently convey the 25-year storm when it previously was not able to convey the 10-year storm. So, I mean, we're looking at, you know, going from not being able to carry a 10-year storm in the storm drain system downstream in the May Branch up to a 25-year, which is a significant increase. And then we've got multiple properties that have been removed from the flood, you know, floodplain, and have actually been, you know, other properties that floods have been lowered.
So when we heard the presentation about 100-year-old, you know, like flood, this is going to remedy what you experience every 10 years, is what I heard you say.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, exactly, is that what now won't carry the 10-year will be able to carry a 25-year storm event on average frequency.
So I guess where I'm at is I'm with Director Settle on this, that I would, I struggle with paying for a lot of consulting work that may give us more than we could bite off right now versus, to me, getting the opportunity to provide flood mitigation, which will help us with our SSOs, which then helps us not incur penalties. To me, that's where my interest is. And then in the meantime, you know, open up the access to that property for mountain biking and there are Eagle Scout groups, or we could do sections at a time only, or finding ways to activate mountain biking groups, looking into the community. You know, I understand that that won't be as cool as it would have been to go the design the whole way through, but for me, I think we should chase the flood mitigation. That's where mine is.
Okay, thank you. Director Good, then Director Rigo, and then Director Neil Martin.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm going to let Jeff Dingman speak. I think he had a comment.
No, I'd just say in response to that, I mean, the importance of the, from my perspective, the importance of these two things moving forward together, the master planning of the entire site and also the design of the stormwater management components, they lead to a point where, I mean, I guess I'm just going to tout the importance of master planning a large piece of property, because when you have a large piece of property on here, oh, we've got plenty of room for such and such. We've got lots of room out on this 100 acres to do whatever projects. And if you do those piecemeal over time, pretty soon you've spent money that runs into each other instead of maximizing the benefit, the overall best benefit of the property that we've purchased. And so that's the benefit of doing the master plan, because you may not be able to do, I mean, the master plan will come back with, of course, most importantly, will be the stormwater component. That'll be the first thing that starts happening. But then when you start looking at what first parks amenity do we want to put out there? Well, where does that idea come from? Well, it comes through this process where we ask the public, what do they want to see us use that property for? And so, and then you build, you build the ideas that are, that come out of the master plan into that, into that program, so that when you have enough dollars amassed to do the first amenity that's deemed the most important, you can do that. But you know that it's not going to get in the way of something else that you want to do later on. And so that's the importance of master planning.
If I could, Mayor, I am charitable to Mr. Dingman's comments about that. And, you know, the only thing I would say is that we do have the Bass Reeves Grant, we have the idea of the 14-mile loop that will be funded without our dollars utilizing that. And, you know, even if we just cleared some of the land hillside, I was just thinking about snowstorm activity and people go to the old Close Country Club to go sledding down the 18th hole. But even if you just had green space cleared to be used by people near the body of water, I just still feel like we're going to be accomplishing things via parks. Our Parks Department is doing a great job, and we're going to have the amenities of expansion of trails. For me, if we forego a park for a good while but could stop the flooding, that's that's still just where I'm at. I, because it's not like we're saying no to park movements. We're doing major advancements for Fort Smith. But this is a major advancement in regards to flooding, and that's where my interest is. Thank you.
Okay. Director Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Director Rego was trying to get your attention before me, so I'll yield to him.
Sure. Thank you. So I have a question for Stan and then a, a series of questions that I don't really care who answers. I would just like the answer. So Stan, when you talked about the ten to, the upgrade from a ten-year to a twenty-five-year capacity, is that figure based off of one detention pond or two?
It's factoring in both.
So whether we build one detention pond or two detention ponds, there will be an upgrade from ten-year carrying to twenty-five-year carrying?
No, to get, to get the level of service that we're talking about, you have to do both.
I see, okay. Uh, so the initial, initial question that we have to consider is do we want to have one detention pond or two? I think that's something that we need to, um, think about, because, no pun intended, things flow, uh, from that. So the first question is, is the design and engineering cost for detention ponds only, did I hear you correctly, that the design costs, engineering costs for detention ponds only, somewhere between four and five hundred thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Okay. And what is the difference in cost of that from one pond or two ponds? If you only designed for one detention pond, uh, is that appreciably less?
It would be, it would be less, but I don't think it would be, you couldn't, you're not gonna take half of it.
Okay. Uh, how long to build detention ponds?
We were looking at about a year.
Okay. And how much do you think it would cost to build just the two detention ponds, ballpark?
Current estimates about five point two million.
Okay. These are important pieces of information. And for the record, uh, I, uh, would like to associate myself with the comments made from Director Settle that while I don't think anything that the group presented tonight precludes, um, anything to do with bike paths and mountain bike stuff, I would like to see mountain bike, um, features when and if we get there on the western side in the quarry pit. I think that's something that, um, regardless of how we would solicit the feedback, I think would have a lot of positive feedback. Stan, thank you for your help.
Director Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent comments from the board. Um, thank you Scott and Travis for your presentation. Of course, I always want to start with thanking Matt for his idea on the flood mitigation for this project anyway. Couple of things, um, you know, we just talked about, um, the importance of a master plan. And one of the directors just spoke to clearing out space and creating green space. You know, once you clear out a space, you know, the trees are gone, you know? So any possibility that we had to use, you know, that area is gonna be taken away. So again, markup for importance of a master plan. The possibilities we were talking about, Director Settle spoke to, uh, being under the impression that, um, the mountain bike, um, park was a big portion of this. And, and it was during, during the conversation, because we had a group of individuals here advocating for that. We actually, they actually came to a parks meeting prior, uh, talking about, you know, where they wanted to have space. So I think it's great that the mountain bike group was here, you know, but other groups would like to, I'm sure, would like to advocate in front of the board. So one of the, Sarah, I'm gonna ask you a question too. So I've attended several of the parks, uh, community input meetings. And in your opinion, can you tell me, is it just me or were those meetings that I attended, were they poorly attended?
That would be correct.
So I, I, I'm asking you that because it was also brought up that we could do the community input, you know, community engagement and feedback. I think that needs to be taken out of our hands and again, put in part of that master plan, uh, of this group that is taking on this task. You know, I'm not think, I'm not saying that we're not capable, but we have to get a good turnout from our citizens, not just a core group on one side or another, or one, you know, group advocating for, you know, trails or mountain bikes or a new whatever, you know? We, we have to be, I want to use this term, you know, equitable in getting a good cross-section of the community's input. So I think those feedback meetings are gonna be very important. And I don't think that, that we would do a good a job as, as, um, RDG. Thank you.
I agree with that statement. And, I mean, I'm sure he's available, but her name's Molly with RDG. A big part of what we asked the firms to do and present was their community engagement strategies. And honestly, I know it's not the most professional language, but after they presented that, I literally just wanted to do mic drop with all the plans they have, the experience they have, and the team they bring for that. And with this being such a big property and not just talking about a five-acre park or a new playground, I think we need to give our due diligence to make sure, because ultimately the citizens are, will be paying for this. We need to make sure that they have adequate input, and it's nothing against our department or my staff, but I don't think we will achieve success to the degree this project deserves.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ding.
I'd like to make a comment just based on an exchange between Director Kemp's statements and Director Good's. The idea that, you know, could we, you know, identify some green space and clear, you know, clear an area for green, yes, we could. But when we master plan the property, we know which trees we can take out that we could later on not miss because we're going to do something else with that property anyway. So for a good, a good while, it could be clear green space. And I just wanted to exemplify how those could, those ideas could integrate. And to, um, uh, another, another portion of what we asked RDG to propose to us, not, I mean, when they come back to us with a proposal for, well, the other thing I'd like to say is all of those advocates who came to, to support the purchase of the property in the first place, the, the mountain bike groups, the, the trails groups, all, all of those, all of those people, those are the ones who are going to spearhead the attendance at these public input meetings also. And so I think that those, those ideas will be advanced. I mean, and staff has those ideas. I mean, even the things that we will champion are the statements that were made when we were looking to purchase this property. So the, the mountain bike amenity that Director Settle mentioned, all of those things that we all thought were pretty cool ideas, we still do. And those will, those will advocate. This property is suitable for that sort of thing because of the changes in elevation, because of the depart, you know, because of the things that are out there. The, the other part of it that we asked RDG to provide to us as part of their team and, and some of the, I recognize some of the faces there. But when they recommend the amenities that we build over time, they also are going to recommend operating procedures and amenities that may have a revenue component to help support the operation of the facility in the long term. And that is, that is another component that we don't have on staff, an ability to identify the same. I mean, the experience that they've got in, in designing several parks across the country with the idea that they've, they've put in, you know, venues that are rentable or, you know, create some sort of operating income to help, help support them, uh, that was important to us as well. And, and we asked all of the design teams to, to make that presentation, and we liked the, um, RDG's components.
Director Rego.
I'm sorry, final comment. You know, just like a lot of other large plans that we've had, you know, once the city starts talking about projects, you know, people in the community start wanting to get involved. And, you know, of course, you know, those park partners will always help, but, you know, different organizations and individuals, you know, normally come forward when we have such a project and want to partner in some type of way. I had a conversation with a gentleman today that I don't think that they're quite ready to make any kind of announcement, but a large organization that wants to be a part of this project. So, you know, know that we have partners out there and, and people in the community that want to see this happen and are willing to step up.
Director Rego.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, uh, this has been a good study session in, or item in a study session in the sense that I feel as though, uh, we learned something very important today, which is that I think we have to move beyond, uh, operating under a misconception that, you know, detention pond, ponds only, um, is some, somehow represents a, uh, inexpensive, um, proposition. I mean, you know, Stan's a, a professional engineer, and of course, we're just asking him, asked him in the series of my questions to make an estimate. But I can't imagine he's too terribly far off when he tells you that, hey, even just doing the detention pond work is about five million dollars. And so when you talk about the park amenities like trails or, or bike facility, or bike, uh, amenities and things like that, I mean, it, it strikes me that no matter how we wish to, um, carve the onion, that the lion's share of, of a cost for this project is the detention ponds that we all agree are important and, and, um, serve a, you know, a, a life-saving purpose. And so, you know, even if we all agreed unanimously to, I mean, I just want it clearly understood and realized that even if we all left here today saying, you know what, detention ponds only, let's get moving as quick as we can and save the other stuff for later, you're still talking about over a year's worth of design, a year of construction time, and somewhere around five million dollars. So it's, it's not, um, insignificant in its expense to do detention pond only. And so I think it's, uh, worth considering, you know, what are the additional costs above that baseline to put in, um, some amenities while you're doing all of this work? I mean, to any of the engineers or presenters here in the audience, I mean, is that a fair characterization that I'm giving? That a huge portion of the cost is driven by the detention work that we deem critical to the, the importance of the project? Heads nodding. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Dingman, then we'll go to Director Kemp.
Just as a follow-on to Director Rego's comments, I mean, building a detention pond only gets us a piece of infrastructure. Going through a process like this that identif, that coordinates the, the overall design and plan for that piece of infrastructure makes an amenity that serves an infrastructure purpose. I think there's a difference. You end up with a piece of infrastructure, or you end up with an amenity that serves the same purpose.
Director Kemp.
Stan, would the, I know the engineering fees come from the sales use tax dollars that we, that the, that the public's voted on. And since this is drainage, and if we are looking at the five million dollar, you know, I know it may be five, one, or whatever, is, is that coming also from the, the sales tax for drainage?
That's correct.
So, I mean, to me, that's what makes that conversation easy, is the community voted on drainage, street drainage. They want things solved. They want flooding solved. They want us to do it in a way that shows we, we hear that, we're doing it. And I think it's critical as you come back to looking at the community voting on the renewal of it, for them to see action taken. And I think the, there are so many things in the hopper. One of the keys that I've said to as often as I can is I think it's, perception is a powerful thing. And to me, I think we ought to focus on that. And, uh, the, the park aspect, I'm just not convinced, um, as much as I know that they, I'm charitable to the idea of master planning, and I do. In fact, that's what I would advocate on the, the city hall building that we're looking at, is what's the plan to make that building, not just the sixth floor that's adequate, but that one, two, three, four, five, and six are adequate, and that's gonna come at a cost. And so, you know, we can only do so much. And for me, I think it's, it's understandable to address this flooding. It has actually been voted to be put into action for these purposes. So that's kind of, I'm, I'm definitely for it. And maybe, hey, don't remove any trees. I mean, I retract my comment of sledding. I just wanted to have a safe space for sledding. But, but, you know, don't touch anything, but install the, the ponds. That's where I'm at. Let's, let's, let's take care of the communities that are flooding.
Director Good.
Thank you, Pastor Kemp, Director Kemp, for your comments, because I, I wholeheartedly agree. Let's take care of the communities that are flooding. And I'm only saying this because this has nothing to do with actually the, the park or this detention pond. But whenever we do have these discussions and Stan has to come up and speak, it makes me think of even before I got on the board, you know, coming to board meetings, talking about the town branch issue. You know, how the community's been crying out for flood help for decades, decades on the north side of town. And we just recently talked about a value-to-benefit ratio. You know, we've heard that decade after decade that the properties on that particular side of town were not worth the value to invest in some type of flooding mitigation. So here we are, um, with another detention pond program before us. Should we do it before or after the park, before the park? You know, that's, that's for the board to decide, but I'm just glad that we're making some type of progress and making movements. Because like, uh, Director Kemp said, you know, the community has let it be known, you know, they want to take care of these issues. And I'm sure no one in this board, just like we didn't want to see the flooding of Kincaid or Fagana, you know, want to continue to see people on the north side continue to be flooded out either. So let's address these when we can and thank those people that are part of the process. Thank you.
Director Neil Martin, and then we're gonna go back to.
Yeah, one quick question, uh, jumping off of Director Rego's comment. So if, you, you, we roughly said about seven point five million dollars for, uh, that Iowa park. Did, so it, I mean, I don't want to, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but was the majority of that park the stormwater detention or, or some kind of flood mitigation? I mean, could we reasonably assume that if we put five million dollars towards a, a detention pond, that we're only looking at a couple million dollars for the, the remainder of the, of the park?
A lot of that will be driven by the planning process and what the community, the amenities that the community wants to see built there in the short and long term.
Then I'd probably say the answer's no on that.
Well, the, for instance, the, the project you referenced, the Iowa River Wetland Park, um, it's a, it's a six-acre park. And it was seven and a half million dollars that were invested in it fifteen years ago.
Right, right.
And so.
And we've got a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eleven.
Yeah, it's, but the magnitude of what you invest in that is driven by the program elements that your community wants to see built there. Building a trail is very different than building an elevated boardwalk over water.
Right.
And building a restroom and shelter building is very different than building a lodge. And so there's the magnitude of what your community would like to see there will, through this process, will start to define kind of the overall capital investment.
Okay.
And I, I think it was mentioned before that there, oftentimes with parks of this magnitude from a funding mechanism, they're, they're often built through a myriad of funding streams. Some of it is CIP money, some of it is, is private, um, investment money from donors and corporations in the community and in the region. And some of it comes from grant funding. And some of it's even driven through other, uh, tax, uh, funding instruments that you have available as a city, as I mentioned before, and some of those other projects. And through this process, we'll work closely with you to evaluate a lot of different funding mechanisms as part of this, because Proz Consulting, our, our, um, operations and, and management and pro forma consultant that is a part of our team on this project, not only helps with some of the long-term operational, um, elements that we want to consider and build into the plan to help you plan for when different phases come online to the park, they also help us inform a funding strategy that gets aligned with how your community wants to prioritize the facilities that you all want to see first and the facilities that can come in later phases. And so all that is built into the planning process. The one thing that I didn't mention that's also included in, as part of that initial, uh, market analysis that we'll do under task two is, um, there will be a, a regional, and depending on the types of amenities that your community expresses an interest in wanting to evaluate for this particular park, there, there could even be, um, a larger study area that could include national amenities to determine the market viability if you choose to want to have revenue generating recreation opportunities at this park, what the potential draw of users could be, how far they would come from, uh, to potentially use amenities at this park, um, and the types of generate, the revenue that those might generate on this property.
Sure, thank you.
If that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, we can go to item number three. Seeing none, we can go to item number three.
Would there, on item number two, still, would there be interest in advancing the agreement with the design professional to the meeting for next week?
Well, I don't mind having a vote on it next week.
Sorry?
I, I wouldn't mind having a vote on it at the next meeting.
Director.
I, I will not be here next week. I would like to get the opportunity to vote, but.
Yeah, I mean, whenever we're fully around, yeah. Do you, still a good second for you, Director Good?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything further on that?
No.
Okay. Now, we'll go to item three.
Item three is review of requested amendments to the Utility Advisory Committee Charter as recommended at the January 7th, 2025 regular meeting. I'll speak to that, or Mr. McAvoy is out ill today. Was provided in your, in your packet revised version of that, of the charter that was discussed at the last meeting. We're particularly along adding some language to have the charter reference directions from the Board of Directors. We did also speak to, which wasn't included in that, that followed up with a redlined version to the board today, but it wasn't, we also need to reference the, I'm sorry, at the last meeting, we talked about the appointments, the, the one that was presented followed some state statutory language, but the board indicated a preference to follow the, the existing procedure outlined in the municipal code for application and appointment procedure, going along those, what, those, those directions. So, those are the two changes that administration will make to one that gets brought back before you for consideration. And I'm open to any other suggestions or comments.
Director Neil Martin.
So, if I remember, there was language, specific language in here, and I don't see it in the red line that said appointment by the city administrator.
It, it did say that, yes, and it.
But I don't see it in the, the red line version that it was taken out. Like, I don't even see it, I guess, as much as.
Well, I think, I think that was still, I think that was in that, in the version that was still included in your packet for this evening.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the, making sure that the Board of Directors provide the direction on that. I think that means we need to make sure that we have, we start identifying those opportunities quickly, whether that be in our next study session or whatnot, but yeah, I'm, I'm for making sure that the, the board point, gives direction on that, and then we, oh, and, and that the board nomin, the board appoints people. The other thing that I have is, I think there needs to be some kind of output from this committee, not just a committee meets. I think there needs to be some kind of written output.
I think that that will come along the lines of what's been directed by the Board of Directors. I mean, when they give, when they give the, when the board gives the committee a task or an objective, then they can also define what the deliverable or the response should be.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Director Kemp.
I have probably a few questions to run over, because, you know, as it stands as current conjecture, I'm like a no on this whole thing. And where I'm struggling is, you know, I even talked to former Director Morton this afternoon, you know, and he was a big proponent of this, and he even kind of agreed with my concerns, which is, if this doesn't just only have director oversight, but director involvement, then it's not going to accomplish the purpose that he even had conceived in his mind about what this could do. My questions are like, what specific gaps or inefficiencies in our current system does this committee aim to address? How much additional workload does this place on the utilities director and the staff? And has that been quantified? You know, what are the estimated costs associated with supporting this committee? You know, if they need consultant cost or legal advice? You know, what are we doing to avoid duplication of efforts with what the actual utilities director's tasked to do? And then, can this not be done through the Audit Commission? Could we not add to the Audit Commission if need be, and if we needed to, or just in temporary nature? But to me, if by the time you say, well, only do what the city directors are asking you to do, well, then we might as well do it. And then, if we got too many things on the agenda, then move them back. I mean, the priority is to show the DOJ that we're doing our homework on all these things mattered to water rates and sewer rates and, you know, hearing the concerns of people and if we need to address, to me, things like lowering the water, the, increasing the amount of water leaks every month, that's a metric that will help us. Can we get him, does he need staff? Then let's talk about that, especially in this interim period of time where he can maybe speak freely. I, I'm struggling to understand why I would even want to do this idea.
Thank you, Director Rigo.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my thought or, you know, hope, I suppose, that I had was, you know, we, we obviously voted and created this committee, and now we're trying to, you know, charter it. You know, obviously, I'd like to see who applies, you know, because I agree completely with, with what Director Martin and others have said about, you know, and Jeff did reflect in an email to us this afternoon that this would be changed prior to February 4th, you know. I saw no reason why the usual process that we have for people to serve on boards, commissions, committees, et cetera, why that would need to be any different or changed at all, which is the application process where people self-select and indicate that they wish to serve, and then members of the board on a rotational basis, if they so choose, get a chance to put out a phone call and chat with the individual and, you know, ask them, hey, you know, what interests you about this and what experience do you have? You know, let them elaborate on their resumes that they've submitted, and then we have our sessions where we appoint who we wish. And so, you know, I, first of all, think that that should be how it should be, like it is for everything else, and I know that's the intent of administration. But secondly, I'm not opposed and would not be opposed to seeing who comes forward, constituting the group, allowing them to meet with the ability at that initial meeting to identify themselves, what they think the issues and topics that are most germane that they would like to dig into are. And because I have a sneaking suspicion, the Venn diagrams will overlap quite a lot as to the things we are interested in and the things they might be interested in. And if they, if that first meeting concludes and none of them said anything about water leaks, I'm dubious that that would be the case, but it's just an example, then we would have the ability to, to speak into the process and say, hey, we'd also like you to look into water leaks, for instance, in the example. I don't personally see any problem with allowing them, after we've chosen who we want to serve, allowing them the autonomy to have an initial meeting where they identify some topics of interest, and if we feel like we have things to add, you know, work collaboratively and encourage them to add those things.
Director Neil Martin.
And Director Kemp, normally, I'd be 100% with you. I voted against it. Director Cat Sav, George Cat Savitz and I voted against it. It was a five to two. If we were sitting at a four to three, I'd say bring it up for a vote, let's camp, let's, let's get rid of it. But you'd have to get somebody else to flip. So, and I don't know if we've got that. So, although I agree with you, I want to make sure that there's proper oversight on our side, or there's proper oversight from the board in order to make sure that, and, and I'm willing to take, like Director Rigo was saying, I'm willing to take feedback from that committee, but it, it needs to be, the board needs to be setting that. If, because, because we voted five to two, I mean, I'm, I'm operating on the premise that we, we can't get rid of this committee, then I think that I'm willing to take that, that feedback from them and, and move forward, just making sure that the board has the oversight and is providing the direction.
And if I could, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
One, just so it just looks above board, I'm being transparent, I mean, I did talk to Levon, and his was not, his idea was, he wanted board involvement, not necessarily just board oversight. And he even agreed with me that this could be handled through the Audit Commission, if, especially if we want to have specific measures looked at, or if we will, but I would much, to me, rather put stock into Lance being able to tell us what does he need to hit some outcomes that we know as directors that we're hearing about. You know, the, the water leaks is one that I hear about a lot, and as I've mentioned before, when the leak I reported, you know, which is frozen, by the way, every time the weather goes below freezing, residents of Fianah Hills are driving over an ice patch, and it's leak number 792 in the queue.
It's not limited to that, Lycam.
Yeah, and so, there's others that I understand that, that's there. And it's not even to the regards of that metric specifically, you know, I know I've heard the presentation that that won't necessarily save us money the way we think. However, it is the inconvenience that people see, it is the precedence or the, the feeling that we've personified that, you know, we're overwhelmed by it. And I think we just need to look at the processes of that, you know, look at the, the rate studies and try to analyze that together, and like we said, if we have to clear the agenda, I mean, that's okay in my head. It's okay to slow down and to do that, and I think we would get better dialogue in this forum as far as action, and even if we hold ourselves accountable, meaning we're not going to filibuster, you know, this is not a tactic to delay or anything, but if we put ourselves to outcome accountability, that, you know, that we would like to discuss, lay those outcomes out, and then start calling ourselves to action to hit those benchmarks, like lead and lag goals, if you will.
I would agree.
Director Rigo, and then Director Good, and then Director George Cosavitz.
Nothing more from me, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Director Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Kemp, yes, I absolutely agree with you and appreciate you making the public statement that you have confidence in the Director of the Department's leadership and work in Lance McAvoy. You know, and to the, to the question of how this got started, you know, you spoke to Director Morton, which I appreciate, and yes, he was avidly for it. At that time, before the last vote where it was five-two, there was a portion of the board that was adamantly against it because Levon was so adamantly for it. There were portions of the community that were avidly against it, saying that the board needed to make the decisions, that it was our responsibility. The next time it was discussed, the roles changed. Then the parts of the community said, yes, we'll go ahead and go with the, the committee. And then other board members said, okay, we'll go with committee, some didn't. And I'll tell you, during that first initial conversation, I was like you, why are we discussing this? What is the duplication of services? What's the expense? Not even money. You know, I believe initially Director Morton wanted to be a part of that, a part of that committee, along with other professionals in the field, which we are not, and don't know how many citizens out there are, but if those professionals are a part of the committee, then they remove themselves from being a part of the work being done if they were to have to bid during the bidding process to do city work. They would pull themselves out of that. So, again, what is the good of having this? How important is it really? And how much duplication of work is actually coming to the board? If we're going to direct a bunch of citizens what to ask and what we're looking for, and then they're going to come back to us, I'm not saying that we don't need commit, community, community input meetings, because we do, we need community bodies, we obviously do. But again, when we first started this conversation, the roles flipped, so again, I'm fine with whatever we do. You know, the board makes the decisions, but again, we already had before us the direction that was presented to the board, and we decided to go somewhere else, and now we're still discussing it. So, here we are, we've, we've approved the board, so we'll just keep moving. But that's how this started.
Director George Cosavitz.
Go ahead. Go on.
I'm glad. I think it's you, George.
I would just, thank you, George. I just think that that's a bad reason to move forward. Doing it just because it's what happened, and I know it's what happened, I appreciate you sharing that, I'm just, if, if we are struggling to provide the clarity of what they will do and how they will do it, then we're already beginning, in my mind, behind the eight ball, and I still struggle, I struggle with the whole process. Doesn't mean that I can't push forward, I mean, I understand I'm only one vote, I'm just saying, I think this makes Lance's job hard personally.
Director George Cosavitz.
Yeah, yeah, we've, I vote, you know, we voted against that.
Correct.
See, here's my, here's my issue. What is this committee going to tell us that we really don't know? Are they going to say, hey, you got to fix leaks? Well, we've talked to Lance about leaks for years, we know what the problem is, either money or manpower. Where are you going to have to, you're going to have to raise rates? So, the, I, I don't, I mean, we have, I mean, we haven't, we haven't access to information they won't have. We can call Lance, we can call utilities, say, what's going on here, why is this, this, this? You know, what can it take? Yeah, we all know what it's, we all know what the problem is, and what, and what it's going to take to fix it. We have 800 water leaks, we fix two, we fix 150 a month and 15 new ones pop up. What do you, okay, tell me what the answer is. Now, what's the committee going to tell us that we don't really know?
I think Director Kemp wants to up that to 250 leaks fixed a month.
I do.
Yeah, but, okay, we're, but as Lance said, we don't have the manpower or the money. So, what do we do? What do you do? I mean, you would pay Forrest Gump, what, $3 million to fix?
Well, there's, there's some challenges related to that, that, there were some challenges related to that contract, I believe.
Yeah.
That, that maybe, maybe we should look at, we should have some in-depth analysis of.
But I don't know what expertise this board is going to bring to, to this board. I mean, if there's, if there's some guy out there that's professional that can fix this, then Lance reach out to it, Lance should reach out to him, or he'd reach out to Lance. But I, I just, I just think, don't we have a study session about this every, every, the first study session, what is it?
No.
To discuss this every month?
No.
I thought we, I thought we passed a deal that we could discuss, that we had a study session solely for the water, water.
Yeah, I don't recall that. I mean, I, I think the, this was in its place, I think, this committee.
That's just my feeling, I, I don't think this is going to be worth our time, thank you.
Any, any other comments from the board?
Are we, well, let's, so, with, without us, I mean, without another vote to, to disband this, this is where we're at. Is everybody good, if this is where we go, is everybody good with these changes, which were the oversight from the, the board, the board providing direction, and then also us?
Well, I would, sorry. From a parliamentary standpoint, please, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance, which is in front of us, which creates the, you know, kind of the rules of the road for the committee that exists, that was tabled to the 4th of February and has to be adjudicated at that meeting. And I would suggest that if that is voted down, there's still a, you know, zombie committee, if you will, in existence, because it was voted on to be created back in December. And so, we would need to take a separate vote at some point to fully deconstruct that committee. But this item is going to be on the February 4th agenda and has to be handled at that agenda, right, Madam Clerk? And then it would take fresh action to get rid of the committee altogether.
That's correct.
So, something to consider and discuss with folks as we move towards February 4th, I would say.
Director Neil Martin.
One final thing, so, to that, to that point, if we do go the route of pulling this back and, and we don't move forward with this, I think we do need to dedicate time to study sessions related to water sewer. I don't know if that's every month, but we need to dedicate time to it, where we discuss, citizens get an opportunity to provide feed, well, it's a part of, part of citizens forum, but we, we start diving in further to some of these items that this committee would address and the ways the board should address.
Neil, one of you two made a motion a few weeks ago to have a study session to discuss the water, these water issues. I'm sorry, Mayor. Was it Kevin or one of you two? That was brought up.
I made a motion to take the first study session every month.
Yeah, first study session.
But that got, that got pulled back because the committee was what people were pushing, so that, that was where it is.
I'd be, I have no problem with that at all.
Director Rigo, did you have further comments?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just think if we, uh, move to that, uh, study session model, which I'm not opposed to having it be a fixed point on our calendar, you know, I would hope that, uh, we would make use of our responsibility and have those be idea sessions and not just study sessions, because it doesn't do anything if it's all information. If, if Lance or whomever, um, you know, reputable source of information stands up and says, well, you know, we had this many leaks or we've had this challenge and this is the cost it'll take to fix it. And if we just sit there and go, oh, boy, that's a problem, that doesn't do anything. And everything's going to have a cost associated with it. Everything's going to have some manpower requirements associated with it. And everything's going to be a challenge. And so I certainly have no problem with study sessions covering these topics, but I hope we bring our, um, work shoes and make suggestions that we can attempt to implement rather than just lament the challenge continually.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments on this item?
Mayor, I, I echo that, and that's why I say set some goals and outcomes to ourselves. That's why, you know, for me, lobbying for being careful where we can so that we can give money, if that's what we need to get the leaks fixed. Or even, I'll just go ahead and throw that, this first other outcome that I think we could look at is when there's a water leak at a property, uh, my understanding currently, and that's why I'm going to say this on record and I can be corrected later if need be, is that because of the consent decree, what we're trying to do is fix the leak and the whole line back to the main so that we can do that. And that sometimes drives the cost of projects.
We've changed, we've changed that, we've changed that.
That, that water is not tied to the consent decree.
Okay.
But to your point, I mean, for a time, we were concentrating on replacing that whole service line from the meter to the main. But right now, but more recently, within the last year, we've been, gone back to focusing on point repairs when the point repair will.
And then further follow-up then, if I could then, on this, because this will help me prepare accordingly. So my understanding is like the city of Barling can have a leak, they pay a guy 400 bucks, he goes up and fixes it. Now, I understand where a different sized town is, there are reasons that they get to do that because of the size of community they are versus the size that we are? Okay, that's the question I do want to try to get to. I just think if we can get to fixing those, it shows to me, it's a step. I know it doesn't necessarily fix the income part of it, but it is to me a priority to show good faith to the residents of Fort Smith that we're not wasting, wasting the water.
Potentially privatizes water leak remediation.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, if there's no other discussion on that, we will go to item number four.
The Board of Directors requested this study session discussion on the recent decision of the United States Supreme Court on the matter of the Chevron deference. The ruling applies to many circumstances, but most notably, um, and to the, to us, is the relevance to interpretations of the Clean Water Act or other items related to the consent decree. The city attorney has prepared, um, an opinion that was distributed to you all on Friday in advance of this discussion. And so both Mr. Canfield and I, hopefully Mr. Canfield, are here to answer your questions or participate in this discussion.
Okay, any questions? Go ahead, Director.
So, so I, you know, we got the, the decision in our packet, and so I got a chance to, to take, take a read of that. So I wasn't around when we, we entered into the consent decree. And I don't, I don't recall, Jared, your, your memo, but was, when, when we entered into the consent decree, and I might need some of you guys that have been around a while, Director Good and Director Settle on this, but when we entered into the consent decree, was there any, um, interpretation of statutes or, or law made by the EPA that put us in the consent decree? Was there anything related to Clean Water Act that was not, uh, part of law? It was, uh, and I'm not talking just the consent decree in itself, I'm talking about different interpretations of the consent decree. I know we've talked about fours and fives and how that, uh, how that impacted. Was any of that based off of interpretation of the EPA?
Very little, if any.
And I qualify it, and I'll explain my qualification in just a moment, but generally, the consent decree comes out of enforcement of the Clean Water Act, the fundamental provisions of the Clean Water Act that, uh, people who discharge into public waters should have a permit to do so and are subject to limitations on the, the content of that discharge. So, for example, our two wastewater treatment plants require a permit to discharge into the Arkansas River. There's really no statutory nuances or different interpretations or ambiguities in the language on those major points.
Okay.
Now, so fundamentally, the answer is no. But if you take that as far as, as EPA often wants to take it, we got down to arguing as we were negotiating the consent decree, we had a lot of argument over, uh, private sewer line, that, that, that private property line from the home to the city's main. How much jurisdiction do they have us to require us to fix things in those private lines? Discharges from those lines might get on to your neighbor and certainly something we don't like, but the chance of it flowing all the way to the Arkansas River wasn't very great. And we did have arguments over how much jurisdiction do you have to compel us to do, uh, private line mitigation programs and things like that. Eventually, those issues worked themselves out and not to an expensive manner in the sense that, uh, basically they were willing to, for the city to create a private line, private sewer line maintenance repair program, which was funded with some money. And the city has money still on account, and I, uh, I was looking for the balances today and I, I don't know what they are, but it's my understanding, we still have significant monies from our initial balances for which we can pay people to fix private sewer line repairs. Uh, and that money is not used up. And so it's, it's not a big issue, but I would say that is one area where we disagreed with DOJ as to the jurisdiction of EPA.
So that's a pretty small amount.
It's a small item in our consent decree picture.
So is there any, outside of that, is there anything in the consent decree, whether, whether the premise of itself, which I think you just said no, or some interpretation that causes the lengthening or the, the scope of the consent decree bigger? Is there anything, uh, in the consent decree that extends it first, based on EPA, um, interpretation, that extends the consent decree, makes the consent decree bigger than it really is?
Nothing in the Chevron deference discussion. There are issues of contract interpretation. We litigated with DOJ regarding the, whether or not the consent decree requires all fours and fives to be fixed. We've, our position was that there was a decisional tree by which you could go through the decisional tree.
And who made that interpretation?
They did, but it wasn't, it wasn't a Chevron issue. It wasn't an issue of, here's a provision in the Clean Water Act and we, as the regulatory agent, agency gets a deference on how we read it. That wasn't that issue. That issue was, we have an agreed contract, an agreement regarding, uh, how you deal with your sanitary sewer overflows. And we interpret that agreement one way, you interpret it a different way. That was decided in the courts, uh, not on Chevron deference. It was decided by the courts that their interpretation of the contract was better than our interpretation of the contract.
So in, in that, in that scenario, does that go back to, and I haven't, I'm not an expert in the Clean Water Act, is that, is that specifically laid out in the Clean Water Act?
No, that issue was, uh, an issue over the writing of the consent decree itself.
Well, that, and, and that's kind of where I'm getting at, is, is the, the writing of the consent decree. Was there, was there interpretation of the, of the Clean Water Act by the EPA that led to the consent decree?
No, no, not in a broad sense. There were some small portions of it where there were jurisdictional arguments. But generally, the issue of, you've got to have a permit to discharge into the Arkansas River is not a disputable issue.
Is there anything outside of the consent decree that the EPA is asking us to do, that, that they're requiring us to do?
Well, I think there are ongoing discussions on some of the city water requirements that, that Lance has discussed with the board. I'm, I'm not.
But water, not city.
Yeah, not, yeah, those are some additional EPA proposed regulations. And that's where, that's where this decision will really help, I think, the judicial system. It will provide for one certain meaning of a statutory provision, rather than giving deference to the regulatory agency's interpretation, which may be plausible, but not necessarily the only plausible interpretation. And thus, with a change in administration, you can get the same statutory language, meaning two different things. And, and that's what this decision is designed to prevent. It's to get away from, uh, situations where the statutory language is unclear. It's ambiguous. It could be interpreted perhaps in many different plausible methods. And the deference to be given to the regulatory agency's interpretation is no longer controlling. The courts are, are to look for one clear, best meaning of the statutory language. Uh, and that's the, that's the course that this process will take place over the next couple of decades in, in the United States.
So when, um, I mean, have you discussed, have you discussed, I think, I think people have asked questions and Paul Calamitas, uh, made reference to it, but is there any, have you had discussions with him about this in terms of?
Yes, yes.
And what's his?
He's reviewed, he reviewed this before we issued it.
Your letter?
Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll hold off for now. I think others maybe have some questions.
Director Kemp?
Yes, hey, yes, a few questions, really just three. Um, one, first one on the impact of an existing consent decree. Does this Supreme Court's decision affect the enforceability or terms of Fort Smith's consent decree with the EPA, DOJ?
No.
Okay. The other one is, should the city reassess its legal strategy or compliance and plans in light of this change in judicial deference?
No, no, I think the city's ongoing negotiations are designed to, uh, ask the agencies to get real regarding the cost and the period of time it's going to take to satisfy the provisions of the consent decree. And the negotiations are maturing. Uh, I think there's, although they won't say it with a signed document, there's pretty much an, an understanding that Fort Smith is entitled to a 10-year extension on the consent decree, uh, provisions, five years which were sort of built into the consent decree, additional time because of the 2019 flood and the 2020 COVID period, assuming that the board is willing to make the commitments that are being discussed regarding, uh, the, the, the period of time on which the improvements in that 10-year period are financed. And basically, the, the concern right now of DOJ is, is there a funding mechanism that gets a lot of that work done quicker, which of course, we would all prefer to do because it saves money? Is there a funding mechanism that can get more of that work done at the beginning of the period rather than at the end of the period? And so the, uh, the, the three and a half percent rate increases, which are scheduled for consideration by the board, the discussion of allocating some sales tax, additional sales tax revenue to consent decree funding, which will be submitted to, is being discussed to be submitted to the public in May. Those are the issues that DOJ is currently looking for to make sure that there's funding for early construction work as opposed to late construction work.
A few other ones. Could we, why, why 10 years? Why not 15 years? Why, why just 10 years? Is there, is there a, a method to the madness of 10 years?
Uh, yes, it's the result of negotiation. Fort Smith put forward, forward, uh, assessments that show we need as much as 15, even 18 years to do the work. They were, you know, for a long time, they were insisting, well, we might give you five if you would agree on what work you would do within the five, a very constrained provision. And, and over a period of months, the negotiations are to the point that, uh, they're basically saying, assuming we have some assurances regarding funding, uh, 10 years is something that EPA might be willing to, to recommend to the court.
Well, the thing I.
It's a negotiation process.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I, I would, I would love to ask that we continue that good because, uh, with due diligence, because one of the things that I listened to is one of the hearings of the Supreme Court case, just listened to about an hour argument, um, that, you know, obviously ended up succeeding in it. And one of the arguments that they continued to make throughout that session was, uh, the cost that was inhibited on those fishing, uh, vessels, you know, that being, having to provide an Overwatch, um, that was, you know, dampening to economics, if you will, to the, to those businesses. And to me, there's two thoughts here. One is, can we look at a renegotiation if, if the city of Fort Smith is moving in good faith action as we already have been doing, spending projects? Can we have the waiving of penalties? So that as we're making progress, now, if the city was to cease in making progress, sure, reinstate them or whatever, but, but we're not going to do that. We've already positioned ourselves, uh, even in the sales use tax currently, to move this ball forward. So could we, could we negotiate penalties is a thought that's in my mind? And the other one is, on the day or, I mean, are we, are we actually still having sanitary sewer overflows into the Arkansas River? And if we were to mitigate those first or not be damaging clean water, if you will, can we have an early renegotiation so that there is no consent decree while the city of Fort Smith finishes its continued sewer improvements? I mean, we're going to make these improvements, whether we have the consent decree or not, but it would sure be nice to not have a, a contract with penalties issuing over the city of Fort Smith.
I appreciate your sensitivity and, and acuteness in, in some of the key points of these negotiations. Uh, all, all of those are subject to negotiation and, uh, but let me assure you that, that, that last point, that last point is where the city was for years before the consent decree came along. The, the city's basic position was, we understand our problems, we understand them better than you understand them. And we understand, you've given us administrative orders and we're acting on those administrative orders. We went years negotiating with EPA before the issue was ever turned to DOJ and then eight years negotiating with DOJ before the consent decree ever came along. And in the last summer before the consent decree, your point was basically where we are. The city put forth a draft of a consent decree, which basically institutionalized what the city was already doing. Uh, and, and in response to that, we get a cookie cutter consent decree from DOJ, which basically said, you've done nothing. And so you start all over by reassessing every sub-basin of your system and you develop a correction plan and in a four-year period, you assess, you plan, and you construct. And you do that in a cycle until you've done the whole city. And, and we said, you're 15 years behind where we are. We've already done that. That's where we're always started. And so we set the summer before the consent decree was entered into, uh, at the point where we said, you don't understand where we are? And they said, you don't understand where we are and we're going to sue you. And so we said, sue us, come on. And we waited all summer long for that suit to be filed and it was not filed. And late that fall, the Attorney General of the State of Arkansas called me and said, we'd like to talk one more time. And out of extended discussions and significant change in positions by DOJ, including the five. five-year additional period of time if the costs exceed the anticipated cost at that time, a consent decree was put forward to the city. And it was approved by the city five to two. But my point is, those are very astute points of negotiation. They are all still a part of the discussions that are going on. I have great confidence in Mr. Calamita. He is very experienced with these things. And those issues and many others are still being put forth and negotiated. And eventually, I think soon, there will be some proposal that will be submitted to the board that will give the city at least 10 years additional time.
And to close on my comment, that to me is an ambiguous story, you know, of federal oversight and Overwatch. And so I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Director Saddle.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Board. Jerry, you and I disagree on the consent decree we have for these years. There's no secret about that. The consent decree was voted on at the last second, right before Mike Bibby left and McDaniel left. There were four directors voted for, two against, and one wasn't there. But if you look at the consent decree, it's really based on the waters the United States rule. And the waters the United States rule is a very ambiguous rule that is not codified, and it is not really codified by the Congress. It is an interpretation of a law, of a rule through the Clean Water Act. The problem I have with the Clean Water Act, it doesn't really say what your limit should be. There's no numbers in the Clean Water Act. It says you must have clean water. That's what it says, right? Pretty much, that's what it says. You've got to have clean water. It doesn't tell you, you've got to have a fog program. It doesn't tell you, you've got to have sewer inspections. It doesn't tell you, you've got to have capacity improvements. If I'm spoken, I think I'm right in this area. That's the problem, is that agencies over since 1980, with the Chevron deference, have interpreted rules to put into, not Congress rules, but into EPA rules, DOJ rules, and has become the rule of the land through the Chevron deference.
But, and that may be true with reference to many regulations or interpretations of silent provisions in the legislation or ambiguous provisions in the legislation. But the, but a position that Fort Smith can discharge sewage from its plants into the Arkansas River is not, is not an issue that's legally debatable.
I'm not legally debating discharge untreated sewage, because right now, my understanding is, for the most part, we don't have untreated sewage out of the treatment plants. We're seeing issues that are a line break, a dry weather issue, where it rains a lot, or it floods the Arkansas River in 2019. And we didn't hear one complaint about sewer overflows when it flooded the river, because that's an interpretation of the rule. That's the issue we have here. There is not one person saying, we should not discharge properly to the Arkansas River. But there has not been somebody to the past two, three years saying, our treatment plant is having problems discharging the Arkansas River. I'm hearing about, we have wet weather issues. I'm hearing half of our problem is dry weather now, where somebody has a sewer overflow. But it doesn't go to the Arkansas River. It goes on through the yard. So my house is at Fiana Hills, farthest away from Arkansas River. But if I had, unfortunately, if I had a sewer backed up into my yard, we've got to report it, get fined, and they count that as a sewer overflow. But it doesn't go to the waters of the United States. It doesn't go to the Arkansas River. That's the problem we have here. A bureaucratic system trying to interpret that we want 100% clean water. But the other side of the story is, who is stopping anybody from, I'll use this term, what's the difference of me having a sewer overflow in my house in Fiana Hills, or I go to the Arkansas River, go in the water, and pee in the water? There's no difference. It's untreated. But we're getting treated differently. So when you read the Chevron deference decision by the Supreme Court, and I read the whole thing, I read the consent decree and read this, a passion comes to me in reading the Chevron deference from Chief Judge Roberts. Perhaps the most fundamental Chevron presumption is misguided because the agencies have no special competence in resolving the statutory ambiguities. Courts do. The framers anticipated that the courts would often confront statutory ambiguities and expect that the courts would resolve them by exercising independent legal judgments. Chevron gravely erred in concluding that the inquiries are the fundamental difference just because administrative interpretation is in play. That is the most important piece. And I think the reason why we haven't got anything to us from the EPA and DOJ is they know that this law is in play and that there's going to be changes coming next week. And the reason I bring this up is today, a Senator from, I'll find it, Missouri.
Missouri.
Because I took a picture, is presenting a bill called the Separations of Power Restriction Act that will compel judges to only decide cases on merit instead of deferring bureaucracy interpretation. He wants to try Chevron deference overturning the law. There's going to be, there's going to be a fiscal law that codifies Chevron deference, the overturning of it. And I believe that if you really, really get to it, that's the reason why they haven't come to us, because they know that they have interpreted laws that should have been codified by the Congress, and then we, and then put on the cities and states.
Yeah, and that's a fundamental issue with reference to the development of enforcement under the Clean Water Act. And again, the fundamental issue of discharging in navigable streams is not a debatable issue. The reach of that is, as you note, a debatable issue. But Fort Smith, unfortunately, is in a consent decree. It is in an agreement, as are multiple cities in the United States. In fact, most cities in the United States that are in riverine situations, as we are. And so.
But those agreements.
This political issue as to overruling Chevron, and whether they do it by congressional provision or the Supreme Court decision that's already been made, isn't going to, at the end of any one day, end all of the consent decrees that exist in the United States. They are contractual provisions, enforceable in the courts. And we can philosophically say, we should never have gotten there, but we are there.
But if the DOJ and the EPA, both with the new administration, decide that they want to go through the consent decrees and, and, and we use the word redline, what has been completed or was no longer necessary because of interpreted Chevron deference, and they could have that agreement and go in front of the judge, and the judge can say, this can be amended to that.
Sure, that's, there's, and that's why our negotiation process is.
And I think that's the reason why they're not, there's nothing in front of us yet, because they know that that's a possibility. And if you agree to something, then you're stuck with it. But if you keep negotiating, they know that that issue is there.
And I think Mr. Calamita is, with the city's administration, firmly convinced that these negotiations should not end until the new administration is in.
I'm firmly convinced that I think with potentially the new AG and the new EPA director, I believe that some of these consent decrees throughout the states and cities throughout the United States are going to be overturned because of Chevron deference. And I believe one of ours is ours.
Director.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Director Kemp.
One thing that I've heard Director Christina Consavas bring up, and we hadn't talked about, so I'm just going to ask that question again, is, and I've heard about Paul Calamita, and I've heard him present himself, he seemed very astute and sharp, so there's no question there. But if we come to the crossroads of that his counsel is to take something, but we want to press further, I mean, are there other representations that we should consider? I mean, why is he the one that's handling this? You know, at what level would we need to maybe consider, you know, new representation? And I don't know, I'm just asking, because that was a legitimate question, in my opinion, and I think it's worth bringing back up.
Yeah, and those issues are for the board. The board just makes the decisions as to the original consent decree and any modification to the consent decree. And the board can get legal representation wherever you wish. Mr. Calamita, in my opinion, would be the proper one to proceed further with litigation. His opinion as to what should be done with one particular settlement offer is not a limitation on his ability or Daylam Wood's ability to represent the city in a different But of course, the city always retains the right to choose counsel of its own.
And I will say to that point also, Mr. Calamita was brought on board after the consent decree was entered into.
Yes.
And so, and also to the fact that he is our attorney, and he will advocate our position. And in discussions with us, he will say what his opinions are and provide counsel as to which direction. But he also is our attorney and will do as we wish. And so, but it is his job along the way to provide us counsel where we think, he thinks we may be going in a different, a wrong direction. His job is to suggest the correct direction. And I think his experience with consent decrees, advocating for cities all across the country is very beneficial to us.
And I just ask that simply because if Director Saddle is indeed on a path that is productive and efficient and possible, that will take great efforts, I would imagine, and consistency. So that's the only reason I bring that question.
From people who are experienced in dealing with those matters, and I think we have a good team in place.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments on item, on that item?
Just one real quick. So, am I recognized, Mayor? Sorry.
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
So is fog mentioned in the, a fog program? Is that mentioned in the Clean Water Act? Fats, oils, and grays?
I would just have to look. I don't know whether there's ours, whether the act itself specifies those remedial efforts, or if those are in fact a part of the EPA standard consent decree negotiations.
And you brought up some other stuff, wet weather, dry weather, SSOs. Are those mentioned?
Capacity improvements, manhole inspections, no, that's in the CWA.
Okay. And I feel like that was the premise for entering in the consent decree. And there was, there was a lot of pressure put on the board, or put on the city. Yeah, I think we need to investigate this further.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. What we'll do is take a 10-minute break and then come back for the citizens' floor. At this time, we're going to go into the citizens' floor. Madam Clerk, first resident.
Okay, first we have Andy Postrick. And everyone will have five minutes apiece.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Andy Postrick, I hope you got my email over the weekend. I told you what I would be asking, and that is to respectfully and not argue with you. But I just want to get this temperature from those of you who are leaning towards a no vote on Move Fort Smith. I'd like to hear the reasoning why. And if I have an answer tonight, maybe I can help push back a little bit, or at least give me something to research and come back to the board at a later date to address that concern. So is there anybody tonight planning to vote no on Move Fort Smith? All right, my work here, son. Thank you.
What I'm going to say, Andy, is I want to, I want to look at it. I understand it's been modified.
I understand it's been modified.
Yes.
I want to look at it. I understand language has been taken out of it that I was not happy with. So, I'd like to take a look at it and read it.
Okay.
I look, okay, I brought it up last night. It looks similar, like the images are the same, the, kind of the layout's the same. There are some things that I obviously noticed right off of the table, contents that weren't there. So, I want to, I want to take a look at it and read it.
Okay. On the topic of some of that language, I think a lot of it is geared towards, hey, you know, all of this stuff is going on at the north side of the town, but if you look at the maps, if you look at the, some of the proposals, they have plans for the whole entire city. And it's not stuff that has to get built, it's just a map. You know, zero dollars get spent until you guys eventually vote to build some of this out. But I will, I will also look at the revised version.
You've, you've read, you read the old one, you haven't read the new one yet.
That's correct. I've not read the new one.
Okay.
I haven't seen it, I don't know if it's available yet.
Yeah, I think it is. Somebody told me that it was. Yeah, I think it is.
Okay. So, for me personally, I'm not, the language doesn't really matter. I think all of that is sort of fluff. When you get down to the nuts and bolts, what this really is, is standardized design guidelines for if a private developer is going to build a new development, and the city is going to take on that new infrastructure and maintain it forever, that they build it out to a specification that we want them to build it to, something that is profitable. If you look at some of the most profitable spaces in the world, on whether they be public or private, so like a public profitable space, Las Vegas Boulevard, something like that. Private profitable spaces, Disneyland. They're all built around trails. Walmart's corporate campus up in Bentonville. So, you can actually do the math, and some people have, and it is widely, widely, unbelievably profitable to incorporate a system of trails within your city. I strive to find any private development that is a city or city-like development that does not incorporate trails. Everything from casinos to cruise ships to golf courses, everything is built around trails. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Next, we have Glenn Forte.
Good evening, folks. On 5/29, I was cited for no permit due to the neighbor's tree going through my roof. Had a temporary cover put on, and Doug Mazel from Neighborhood Service Supervisor Sean Godd, he works under, threatened me to get a permit. I get a permit, but a house, ten houses away at 1500 North 49th Street is exempt from the city because he wears a blue uniform and a badge, and he's a city captain of your lovely police department, that he's above the law, he says. He doesn't need permits. On 12/19, I was on the street, and I had called the city and asked why there's no permits here. I found out in between all of it, there was an investigation with the federal government, EPA, out of Texas, for contaminating the environment and the air and in the ground of removing lead paint, hazardous paint, from the building. And the report is being done as I speak. And he's done all types of work there since 1/1 of '24 to January 14th of '25, and does not, and is not accountable for any permits at all. And the permits, I was told from Jimmy Dear on Tuesday of last week, requires permits. He's hired a contractor out of the state of Oklahoma under the table, and that's all included in this, what's going on. And he's above the law. But I'm on social security as a senior citizen neighbor and a resident of this city, and I have to take permits because they drive by and write me up. And I have all my permits here up taken over the last 10 years. He has one permit he took out in 2008. And when I speak, I speak to concrete as evidence that what I tell you people is nothing but the truth. This guy is robbing the confidence of the city hall, getting a go-away card, and the city officials are looking the other way. Who is he paying? Who is he bribing? He's stealing from the residents of the city, and he's supposed to be one degree above the law? I don't think so. He's very shady and a very dirty cop, whether he's a captain or a patrolman. On 12/19, I walked on the lawn to see what a business card from the city meant. It kind of gave me the message, hey, the public's stupid, so I walk over, not knowing there's a criminal law about criminal trespass. I take a picture. No permits, no violations. He's in violation because it's been called in before. Here we are today, no permits again. I verified that today at 4:00. Why is this go on in this city, and there's no held accountable? But on 12/19, I left his property, I seen the city truck there, they left, I went up, I took a picture, got in my car, and left. He's making out a warrant for my arrest on the 19th with an affidavit. I go to the doctor half a mile from my house on the corner, the corner of Kelly Highway and 50th. I leave there after the doctor did a prescription for 11:16. I pull up to the stop sign on North 49th Street at approximately 11:30. He pulls across from the other side of the street at the stop sign where we headed out in April of '24, trying to be a supervisor when he shouldn't have been there. He threatened to kill me verbally, and then he told me, I'm gonna put you in jail. Within 20 hours, I was locked up from Burger King in jail Saturday morning. He was in a police car, no uniform. I'm gonna kill you. I was arrested at 8:30 Saturday morning, the 21st. He pulled right over to my car verbally, threatening to take my life. He's a pig. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Charlie Hartsfield.
Well, I came tonight to talk about the alleyways, the master plan, how that's gonna work out, but oddly, I worked as a chemist at the sewage plant years ago, and we took stuff in, took it out. I had the measures and called Washington a few times about what's going on, and those were the good old days. Those days are gone. That was in the late 60s, because I'm getting old. I've been a lifeline, lifetime resident of Fort Smith. And, you know, I could say in a humorous way, I built retention ponds in the Brick Plant property. You guys aren't old enough or didn't live there, but we boys spent all our summers in that valley, big goatee, little goatee, the pit. We spent many, many hours in there, and I was just, I'm not an engineer, I have nothing to do with it, but just looking at the map, the two ponds, the pond in the pit area is a little higher than the pond in the, in the Brick Plant area, so I was thinking, and the, and the watershed into the pit, pit area, is not that great. A lot of water comes from Country Club, Bert Wright's house, and all down through that valley, behind Valley Lane, comes into around the ballparks at the, at the stoplights. And so, I'm thinking, how does the water, it's flat, how do we pump it in? There's a big creek behind the ballparks. This is, this is not my business, I'm not an engineer, but I could see how one big pond on the Brick Plant side could just about do, because water comes out of May Branch and those creeks. I'm way out of my league here. But anyway, the alleyways, I just have the question, apparently, we're gonna take that money. My question was, and I tried to read, somebody had done the survey of where the, which alleys we're gonna do, I tried to put them together. I don't, I still don't know the ultimate goal of fixing the alleys. It's nice to say we're gonna clean up alleys. I don't know if it's gonna be asphalt, concrete, how do you maintain it? Is private property gonna be acquired for some reason? And while I was still inactive in my practice, I would occasionally walk alleyways, and it's really interesting what people have in their backyards. It's a whole nother world back there, it's pretty colorful, but there are some people that don't want you to mess with their backyard, so, but I don't know how these are gonna be connected. So, my question is, is private property involved? What's the material? What are we gonna do in those alleyways? And are they supposed to be connected for a ultimate purpose? And if we spend that four million or so, and we haven't quite gotten there, do we need to spend more to complete some project? I don't know if any of you know the answer to that or not. It may have been explained, but maybe I wasn't here. I'd like to ask you that, if you, what's, what's the, what's the final ultimate goal of connecting these alleyways to something?
I believe the goals are connectivity, connected schools, parks.
Their connectivity?
Yeah.
Is it schools?
Schools, parks, those kinds of things.
Yeah. Kind of like fixing sidewalks to walk on, but you gotta clear alleyway. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, anyway, I think that's, in the private property issue, will people lose part of their yard or part of their freedom in the back of their house?
I would hope not.
I would hope not.
Now, I do know, I think if I remember back when this first was presented to us, there is a map of where those are.
On my computer, it's hard to, hard to see exactly how they, they're not necessarily connected, they're just, okay, due to schools and where the kids have to walk.
That's, that's my understanding, that that was, that was the point of it.
That's the reason those particular ones were selected to go first, yes, sir. Okay, and that, it'll be a finish, once, once that money is spent, or the alleyways are done, except for maintenance and policing, we're done with that. Is that right?
That'd be my expectation, yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Next, we have Crystal Cadelli.
You're good, you're good.
What I've had to say has changed about 25 times, so during this session, so if I seem out of it, it's because I am. So, I, from the beginning, was against the Utilities Committee, just for the fact that I think that it's very hard on the, the city employees for citizens to overwhelm them with suggestions. I think, in my opinion, the only way to effectively collaborate, since the committee did pass, is to have Lance on the committee, along with a board member, a grant writer, and someone from the Finance Department, and have your citizens be, you know, the civil engineering or, and/or a general contractor that has wastewater and utility experience. Because I think that if you can collaborate together, then it's not wasting time for the employees or the citizens. Whether that suggestion is viable or not, I don't know, but it's just a suggestion. My other suggestion would be to give back the Utilities Department the almost a million dollars that they take out of their budget to fund the mayor and the board, take that from the general fund, and let the Utilities Department fix their leaks, hire more people, whatever they need to do to make the infrastructure better. And then, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is, you know, we, we had the ability, and although I wasn't here last week, I was able to, to watch from afar, and, you know, Kevin really hit the, you know, hit it home with saying that with the EEI grant, we had an incredible opportunity to enhance our infrastructure and our wastewater systems, but instead, we, you know, prioritized the needs less than 5% of the population. So, we're helping less than 5% of our citizens when we could have really improved our infrastructure and helped our financial crisis that we're in. The idea of building another park at the Acme Brick Plant is completely unnecessary and a waste of money. We have Cretemore Park just around the corner. We don't need another park. I don't understand why we wouldn't build the retention ponds and make that land viable for development. If it's, if it's not flooding, you should be able to develop it and build on it. And then, you know, I know that some members of this board aspire for Fort Smith to be like Northwest Arkansas, but without, you know, financing, financial backing from corporations like Walmart, Tyson, and J.B. Hunt, we, the citizens, shoulder the burden. And we are no Walmart, Tyson, or J.B. Hunt. We're, we're made up of mostly blue collar, hardworking people, and we cannot continue to face these steep water rate increases, sewer increases, taxes, we have a park tax, we have a consent decree tax. You know, are sewer rates gonna go up three and a half percent year over year for five years, plus what our water rate goes up to? We just can't continue down the path. You want Fort Smith to grow, but people are gonna be flooding out. Businesses aren't gonna come in because they aren't gonna have people to support them. We can't continue to do what we're doing. And I want to ask this board tonight, I mean, are you here to serve yourselves? Are you here to serve your, your people that put you in this position? Because I know that there are a couple of you that always support the citizens, and we do appreciate that. We really do. And, you know, I've seen some changes in a couple of other board members, and we, we're thankful for that. There's a couple that spend our money like it's endless, like I tell my children, there's not a money tree in the backyard. It does, we don't just grow it. So, I would appreciate the board to, you know, put the citizens first, and to do what you need to do to fix our infrastructure, and make this a city that everybody wants to live in. Thank you.
Chris Cadelli.
Good evening. I too would like to kind of echo what my wife just said. With regard to another new park, I just think that we're kind of park-rich here in Fort Smith. We got some great parks. I think we have over 29 parks, as far as I'm aware of. I'd love to see more focus on maintaining the parks that we do have, upgrading the equipment, you know, kind of making those parks shine and, you know, be a great asset to the, to the city. I think that to try to add another park would be, would, you know, basically dilute the park and rec budget. That's gonna be more money they're gonna have to come up with to develop that park, to maintain it. I mean, I love, they're great ideas, but if we had, if we were flush with cash, you know, I think it would be a, a pretty good investment. But considering the headwinds we face, I know that, I just saw a report today that Fort Smith in 2024 had a 45% decline in building permits, and that's gotta be a, you know, fairly significant headwind, an indicator that, that maybe things are gonna be tough. So, I think that it's real important that we buckle down and focus on prioritizing what's most important to the, you know, to the city as a whole, not just certain groups. And obviously, water and sewer affects all of us. I mean, there's no demographic that's not affected by the water and sewer rates, the water and sewer system. I think it's kind of getting to be a joke now about the water leaks all over town. It's, it's kind of embarrassing that we can't, for whatever reason, get a handle on 800-plus or minus water leaks. And it seems like some months, you know, the, the new leaks outpace the repaired leaks. And so, I just think that it's important that... And so I just think that it's important that the water department in particular gets the attention it needs and the support. Obviously, what's been, you know, kind of what we've been doing is not getting the job done. I mean, here we are, you know, year after year, talking about these water and sewer problems. And I just think that I would love to see this, you know, become, you know, if not the priority, one of the top priorities of the board and the city administration. I think, you know, if we can get people to give this the attention it deserves and prioritize it, I think it's fixable. I mean, it is fixable, but it's going to take a majority, you know, it's going to take a majority of you guys to make this the priority it needs to be. And I sure hope that we're not, you know, in 2026, 2027, still talking about water leaks all over town, water pressure, SSOs, you know, all this stuff. It really, it's imperative that it gets resolved. Who, you know, these things are all over social media, they're all over the news. I mean, you can't hide these issues. And it is, I mean, it's something that needs to be taken care of. And then, you know, as far as the $29 million grant that the city is real excited about, you know, I just don't understand why we have no problem finding all this funding for trails, for alley repairs, for stuff that really is only going to impact a smaller percentage of the population. Why are we not having any problem finding all this money for this, you know, these type projects? But the, you know, more important stuff that does affect the whole city, everyone that lives here, we just struggle, we just continue to struggle. So, you know, I, you know, those folks that live in the, you know, that live in the path of this new trail, you know, I'm glad I don't have a house there, I don't have to worry about my property being, you know, taken through eminent domain or, you know, whatever the case may be. But I just think it's just another example of, you know, priorities, you know, the things that really matter the most are kind of getting put on the back burner, and stuff that looks nicer, seems nicer, and more exciting, and that kind of stuff is being, you know, is the primary focus. So I'd love to see whoever's finding these grants, I'd love to see some pressure put on them to find us some money for water and sewer. Thank you.
Next, we have Patrick McGuire.
I've got a lot to say, so I'm going to talk quickly here. I've got some solutions to some of your problems regarding the homeless situation in the city. We spoke before that there's basically two different categories of homeless people. There's those that choose to live that type of life for whatever reason, okay? I'll get to them in a bit. But there's a, I'm sure a sizable population of people who are homeless for reasons beyond their control and are in need of help in order to get out of their homeless situation. For that purpose, I propose that we repurpose the BOSTE building as a processing center for those type of homeless people. They would be brought to this center, they would be interviewed by social workers to determine why they're homeless, what it's going to take to get them out of homelessness, facilitate those kind of changes, process them out, and bring in the new one. I'm not familiar with the building, but from what little I do understand, I think the basic infrastructure there would facilitate this very easily. The facility would also provide temporary shelter, and I do stress temporary. This isn't going to become another housing facility for unfortunate people. Get them in, process them, get them out, and, you know, eventually you'll be able to solve a lot of the homeless problem. This operation could probably, in my opinion, be run by two, perhaps three, full-time employees. You could also partner with the university to get students who are studying social services and related fields, get them to work as unpaid interns. They would earn extra credit toward graduation. We intern, oh, and they would also have hands-on experience before they graduate. We intern would get additional help at no additional cost. That would more or less take care of that population of people who are homeless, not from their own circumstances. Now, once that operation is in full swing, then you can bring up the ordinance that Mr. Gard brought up last month, and you can enact that. The only additional thing you would need to do is to provide an area somewhere where it would be legal to camp. It would be away from downtown. The first thing that comes to my mind is out on the north side of town, somewhere off the Clayton Expressway, or something like that. By doing that, you will eventually alleviate much, if not all, of your homeless problem in this city. And it will be done at minimal cost. You have the basic infrastructure ready to go, it should be able to start it almost immediately. Any questions?
I think that's a very interesting idea for the BOSTE facility. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes. Okay. Before I go, I need to give a big shout-out to Chief Danny Baker on his handling of the recent unfortunate incident within the police department. Had Chief Baker chosen to quietly terminate those six officers, sweep the matter under the rug in order to avoid any possible embarrassment, nobody would have faulted him for that. Instead, the man chose to be open and transparent with the city, citizens of this city, and in my opinion, that speaks volumes about the character of this individual. I think Fort Smith is highly blessed to have a man of this honor and integrity as our chief of police. And Chief Baker, I, sir, salute you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Carrie Salee.
I do believe, well, as Miss Salee comes up, come on up, Carrie. I do think we need to change the conversation of, the homelessness conversation that we're having with our homeless coalition. And I think Director Kemp is wanting to kind of change that as well, but I think we need to change what that discussion is like. And I'll let Miss Salee go.
Hello, I'm Carrie. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. And I kind of wasn't going to speak, and then I've decided to because the move plan was brought back up, and I still am very concerned about the federal grants, how they're written, where they're from, the far reach. And I'm asking if you have read the entire plans that have been set before you, all pages, and then have you done your research on other cities that are taking these grants and what's happened in them, and educated yourself on the other side to these grants? Because there is a huge other side. So that is my concern still. And I do agree with Andy that the language really doesn't matter if you take it out. It's the fact of who wrote it, where it came from, and that the whole premise behind it is still there. So removing some words on a piece of paper, in my opinion, doesn't touch it. I believe that we have to be very careful protecting our city and the River Valley because socialism, Marxism, and communism have overtaken our country using the tools of racism, federal control, and surveillance over our entire lives, robbing the innocence of our children through sexual perversion, the use of brainwashing techniques and terminology such as climate change, critical race theory, diversity, equity, excuse me, inclusion, sustainability, discrimination, hate speech, resulting in the destruction of our families, the church, separating people into classes like serfs. We've watched this go on for years now. How many times have you heard the phrase "our democracy"? Well, we are not a democracy. We are a constitutional republic, and that is gaslighting language when we hear that. We're governed by we the people, and tragically, right now, we are witnessing how DEI policies have actually ended in the deaths, in the devastating fires of California. DEI needs to DIE to save our republic. It has been a powerful tool in the demise of our country, and we're watching that. Now fortunately, DEI is dying very quickly as major corporations and universities eliminate DEI and LGBTQ policies, including Walmart, Facebook, Amazon, Boeing, McDonald's, Nissan, University of Michigan, Southwest Airlines, Target, Caterpillar, Coors, Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, FCC, United Airlines, Toyota, Morgan Stanley, BlackRock, Western Carolina University, Ford, Lowe's, University of Kentucky, Jack Daniel's, Harley-Davidson, Microsoft, John Deere, CNE, Tractor Supply, Chipotle, Lyft, UPS, Eli Lilly, Starbucks, Bank of America, Home Depot, DoorDash, Wayfair, Zoom, Google, Tesla, IBM, Comcast, Goldman Sachs, Twitter, American Airlines, Cleveland State University, Disney, Mars, Apple, and just today, AT&amp;T. Well, these grants are full of this DEI language. And this is something that is finally going away, and also, climate change is going away. Robert Knight, Washington Times, exposed that two Wyoming legislators have introduced a bill entitled "Make Carbon Dioxide Great Again: No Net Zero," stating that it's way past time that the whole CO2 is dangerous scheme was unmasked. Also, a group of physics scientists formed the CO2 Coalition in 2015 to counter the claims by the United Nations Panel on Climate Change that the world needs to reach net zero emissions by 2050. Sound familiar? Further, it states that this is not only impossible, but life-threatening since our sustenance depends on abundant fossil fuels. Finally, Canada, Alberta's United Conservative Party passed a resolution November 2024 calling on the government to abandon net zero targets, remove CO2 designation as a pollutant, and recognize that CO2 is a foundational nutrient for all life on Earth. These whole net zero emissions found in these federal transportation plants are ridiculous. Basic science tells us that plants emit oxygen for humans, and humans breathe out CO2 that feeds plant life. So life would be destroyed, zero emissions. So these grants are written with this. I'm very concerned about our downtown. I don't have time to share that with you, but I have major concerns about our downtown. So please do more research on this, listen to your constituents' concerns, and please research before you vote. DEI is very harmful and dangerous. And I have this agenda book, too, to share, if you're interested in that.
Next, we have Jack Helms. Jack Helms.
Considering that Crete Moore Park is a few blocks up the road from the Acme Park site, and that Old Greenwood Road is a highly-traveled commercial corridor. After the retention ponds are completed, the property around them will be very valuable, commercial and residential property. My suggestion is to construct the retention ponds, then sell the property around them, and apply those funds to the cost of the ponds and critical needs of the city, such as our crumbling sewer system or repairing our water leaks. The city does not have a critical need for another park. Thank you.
And last, we have Joey McCutcheon.
If Mr. Forte was abused like he said he was, there needs to be an investigation into that.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Baker needs to institute it if a police officer abused this gentleman like they said he did. You know, today in the morning news, and I've been following this all along, Bart Hester, Senate pro tem, Arkansas State Senate, said that they had a ton of money, apparently, at the state legislature, and he's planning on taking it to Northwest Arkansas. So I would ask the board to get with our local delegation of state representatives, and let's get some of that grant money. Let's get some of that money that's in Little Rock, because Bart Hester plans to take it to Northwest Arkansas. You know, we talked about equity, we've talked about what Carrie said. It's an important discussion, because I believe in equity. You know what? Those detention ponds, that $5 million that the board is considering spending, looks like a good idea to me, because those people on the north side of town need some equity, you know, because shit flows downhill. And that's what's been happening. The north side of town has been being flooded with sewage and waste for a long time now. And you know, that's genuine equity. But you know what is not equity? Is Appendix D in the plan that you still haven't approved. Now, I got to ask the question, don't we have the cart before the horse? We, as I understand it, we just received after the second request, a $25 million grant to build greenways and bikeways and walkways and every other kind of way, but you still haven't approved the plan. So, back to Appendix D, I FOIA'd the changes, and I still haven't received the changes. I guess I'll have to send another FOIA request, but Appendix D is why people like me get really, really ticked off.
I believe Appendix D is not there anymore. Have you verified that?
That's what I've been told, but I haven't seen the document. But the question becomes, how did Appendix D get into this document? You know, it's the leftist stuff. It's the leftist stuff, Lee. That's why I use the word leftist, because it is, because it calls Fort Smith racist. And hey, I guess every community has its share of racist, but I think Fort Smith has shown that we're really not a racist town. I met with the mayor right after, and Sam Secard, immediately after George Floyd died, when we had the Richardson's calling Fort Smith racist. And then, I keep asking why, and then, this is where they get that, you see? Then they incorporate it into the plans that the board never approves. You know, what did we hear tonight? Time and time again, we heard the importance of master planning, the benefits of master planning. And we had some great discussions tonight, some of the best that I've seen with this board, and I'll thank Lee Kemp for that. I'm disappointed in his last vote, but I think he is a conversation driver. And we heard a couple of things, and I want to talk about these plans. The Green Plan's never been approved by this board, although it's floating around in the state. You know, they talk about the good cross-section of the community needs to be involved in this plan for Acme Brick. That's a great idea, but let's be honest with ourselves, Director Rigo and Director Good and Mr. Dingman, there wasn't a cross-section in the green energy plan. You went directly to the Green crowd, who's not here tonight and won't be here probably to discuss the consent decree, but you went to them, and the people, because I attended a meeting in July, and after seeing what was happening with our city, with this leftist green plan, I made a commitment that I was going to call, I was going to name names and be very aggressive in my comments. I've sued the city twice now. I'm sure you've seen the settlement agreement that I've sent to your lawyer. I hope you've seen this. I hope you've seen this tonight, that we can settle two lawsuits, no attorney fees, if you'll admit that there's illegal spending going on in the mayor's office, and that Mr. Gefkin acts outside the scope of his authority. But the bottom line is, we need to approve plans, the board needs to be involved in these...
Your time is up.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all.
Thank you. If there is nothing else to come before the board, a motion to adjourn?
Just one more thing, just a reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th, for Martin Luther King Junior Day. That's all I needed to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, did you look at the preliminary agenda?
I did want to mention something. Are we, on the hearing of the Make My Move, is it best practice to hear about it so early? I know, I looked at the coming-up agendas, and I know that's slated to come to us. And I just wonder, should we move that back till a little bit more of the MOVE season has actually occurred, so that we have good data with better ROI on it?
I'll second that. I mean, we certainly can do that. I mean, the idea was to give sort of a status report.
Yeah, I mean, I knew, and I'm for it, as far as hearing the status update. I just think hearing it back to where we get maybe a few more results to add to the dashboard would be helpful.
Yeah, I think we could always get sort of a status of where we are at this moment in time emailed to us, but a fuller presentation might be better when it has more data points to work with.
Thank you. Acknowledged. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn, I think we've got that.